The topic, I just want to grab. You have an applicant here this evening that's been invited as a result of a referral letter from Mass Housing that Monarch Beach Realty Trust is interested in developing a property in East Falmouth and interested in developing affordable housing along with market rate housing on that parcel. Town has a history and in practice of inviting those applicants to the board to present the project and then drafting a referral letter to Mass Housing, simply really a 30,000-foot level of what the issues that the development may face through the regulatory process, how the project meets the town's plans for affordable housing, and what concerns generally the board may have about any given project, or how you may be enthusiastic about a particular project. So this really is at that level. This is a pre-development, pre-permitting process. Mass Housing is a subsidizing agency from the state and that approval is essentially required under this application in order for the project to move forward to the Zoning Board of Appeals in pursuit of a comprehensive permit.
And this is under the 40B project?
This is under the 40B, correct. So Mr. Glenn is here this evening. He has been provided with a review of the project by our staff development team, some comments in general on the project. I've reviewed those with Mr. Glenn and it really is for the board to hear about that. A draft letter to Mass Housing has also been circulated, which essentially is very similar to the staff comments and the board's free to edit, amend, disregard, however the board may choose to proceed.
Okay, so we'll hear the presentation, then make a decision on the referral.
Okay, thank you. My name's Paul Glenn from Glenn Law Offices. I represent John Drooly. He's here tonight and the proposal is for 44 homes out on Timothy Bourne Cartway, which is off of Route 28 and it's just west of Central Avenue. It's east of Davisville Road and across from Kenyans would be Kenyans, that area right there is what we're talking about there. And there's another affordable housing. Should I pick this up? Is that what you'd like me to do?
Yes, please.
There's another affordable housing. Here's the project right here. Here's the development right here. Central Avenue, the commercial center at Kenyans, in existing, really two existing affordable housing developments right in the area. And here is the other one, right here, okay? And this is just a map of the area. It shows the fire department and it doesn't show the school and multifamily housing here in the Village Center at the end of Davisville Road. These are also developments that John Drooly did, right here in this area.
And the access is through one of them?
The access is through one of them, yes, right here. That was a, I'm pretty sure it's an eight-unit development that did here and this is 44 up here. So, you know, I hear people say, oh, 40B is back, but it's not really, 40B doesn't have a life in its own. It's really driven by the market and the real estate market pays for the affordable homes. If you look at the pro-farmers that are put out there, on the affordable homes, even without considering land costs, you lose about $75,000 per home. So if you want to develop, if you want to sell people homes for about $150,000, you're losing about $75,000 per home and, you know, 10 affordable homes, it's quite a bit of money to do that. So how do you do it? You can't build affordable housing when there's no market for market rate housing. And, you know, all development really stopped, came to a substantial slowdown for a while when the economy slows down. And this is an opportunity. In the meantime, people don't, people live in homes that are somewhat substandard at that point. These are new homes that John builds. I think anybody that has been to any of John's development will see that you think you're in a really nice development. This is his, this is the way John does it. There are ways of doing it with condos and big, bigger buildings. John prefers to build and he has a nice track record of building single-family homes. They're on pretty big lots. They're 10,000 square feet or more, a lot of them. And they, if you look at the development, they fit in generally with that area. These are the size of lots that all the older developments in the town are built on. And that's what John builds and they look nice. You can, there are many examples of his work throughout town and I think they're all very highly regarded. So Heather, the Assistant Town Manager, did send that initial staff report out and it's quite extensive. You know, to build this, you do have to consider many, many things. John has and we've worked with Mass Housing that really oversees it. I can, I think I'd let you guide me in this. I can either go through each one, one by one, or answer questions, the things that you feel are the most important and then we decide where to spend the time. We do have copies. You have been submitted, actually, and I have other copies of the exact homes. We had tonight, we can show you those homes. They're really very attractive. We have the site plan and we have the neighborhood plan. There, I can show you, there's an application that we submitted to the state that they scrutinize very carefully, that you have received an entire copy of. And the state, after they get your comments, will do another, will scrutinize it again based on that. They just don't give you these, they call them a site approval letter. They just don't give you these things because there's a law that says you can, you get some special treatment for building an affordable housing. They scrutinize it pretty carefully, so they'll be going through that process after your letter before we submit the more detailed plan to the Zoning Board of Appeals that would have the actual authority to deny or approve the project.
Mr. Chair, I was just going to suggest, Paul, that maybe you respond one by one to the comments that the staff addressed.
I'll probably put.
If you would.
I'll put here. So, I mean, the answer is, we're going to address every one of them, you know, and some in more detail than others with the state. I mean, that is the answer. So I reviewed the town's housing action plan and everything and this certainly fits into it. That's the first thing. It's many, many pages, but basically it comes down to Falmouth, Falmouth is getting older and Falmouth needs more affordable housing, I think, that would be the end result of that one is. And John is providing here affordable housing for families. This is, they call it workforce housing. In order to qualify to buy one of these homes, you have to have good credit. You have to have a job and you have to have good credit. Private banks will do the financing for them. We're not getting financing from Mass Housing. Private banks will give them the finance and they have to have good credit to do it. And they also have to have good, not only have good credit, but they can't be making too much. So we find that people that work up the hospitals or things like that end up buying these homes. And they are living in the area someplace. They're just living in substandard, substandard homes someplace is usually where they're living. So that's the first one. It is near an airpark. It is near an airpark. I've been up there a lot. I've never seen an airplane, but airplanes do go over there. I know that. It's not in, the airpark did extend, some regulation came in that they wanted to extend their safe area and we're out of their runway area, you know? All of these homes must see planes sometimes flying over there. I don't think it's a very busy airport, but we are near it. So John, you know, I say John Drooly because he's sitting here today. So an LLC owns the property and it's called Green Cove and Green Cove, the state, let me back up before I answer the question. The state scrutinizes the, they call them pro-farmers, all the finances, very carefully. I mean, they really go over it. And the way I explain it to them is, when you fill out your income taxes, you should always fill them out, you know, you can give yourself the benefit of the doubt perhaps. You don't know whether you're going to get audited or not. John will be audited. This is 100%, absolutely, John will be audited. Every check he writes, they will look at and John will pay, not only for his accountant to provide the audit, he'll pay for the state's accountant that's going to do the audit. So this isn't, you might have heard stories from 10 years ago or more where this wasn't supervised so well perhaps, but John will be audited. And so this is, the next one lists is this control, side act, side control act, oh, side access. Sorry. So how do you get to the site is that question. So you want to look at the plan here and, well, actually, the one here is better. It shows the whole neighborhood. There are, I think, three houses back here. There is Timothy Bourne Cartway. It does exist. It runs all the way up to the Falmouth Country Club. Yeah, we call it the Country Club, the Falmouth Golf Course. It runs all the way up there and connects with Alexander Booker Road. John has the same right to go over this road as all the other people do. Now, the state is, they don't just accept me saying they have the right. They don't accept me sending them just a couple of deeds or perhaps John's title insurance that says he has the right. We're going to really, we're going to submit a brief and show that very carefully and thoroughly to the state that John has the right to drive over that like the other people over there and we'll deal with that, we'll deal with that access. So that was more site control access, but it has to do with control a little bit, I think. You're asking, you want us to prove that John controls the property he's developing. He owns title now in an LLC. It's a very common way of doing something. But the proposal is we transfer it into a special entity that is, that agrees with the state to have a limited dividend, they call it. You can make 20% return, not per year. Sometimes they take five years, sometimes they take more, sometimes they might take two years. You can, and that has to be written right into the document that will actually do the work and undertake the project. So we'll create another one later. So those documents are in your package too. We'll create another entity later that will agree to be a limited dividend organization that can't take more profit than the program allows. They call it, the program, they call it, is called Mass Housing Starks and it's not rentals, it's homeownership. And it's, they have lots of regulations and you have to comply with them. And one of them is that limited dividend organization where you have to limit the amount of money you take in.
Just to be clear, I mean, I think there is a lot of these are questions that need to be answered. I'm not sure whether this is the right time to be answering them. I think it's a matter of whether we're going to refer this on. Some of these are things done by Concom, some it's going to be done by DPA, some it's going to be done by Mass Housing.
Each one of them you could spend substantial time on.
Heather, can you?
I think Kevin wanted to say something.
I just need to ask some specific questions rather than generality, so let's just.
I prefer that, yep.
The road appears to be 10 feet wide. The right-of-way, at least to the information that I've received, that's relatively small right-of-way.
Well, that wouldn't be enough.
That's why I'm asking that question.
Right, that wouldn't be enough. Okay. I think on the plan, the plan is, yeah, here's the plan. And I think what you see is a 10-foot wide easement.
That's correct. That's what I'm asking. That's, in other words, I'm not talking about your development road size. I'm talking about to get to the development.
To get there.
It appears to be 10 feet.
Right.
So can you address that?
Okay. So looking at the plan there, it does say 10-foot easement here and 10-foot easement there. And then there's, that's 16 feet in there, but I think John would like to, when he does the final plans, make it bigger, actually. But what's there now is a 16-foot road. It's, there's a 16. The 10-foot, you're talking about the 10-feet. The 10-feet is the proposed easement to allow gas in one side and electricity on the other side and water would be in the middle. So that's, that 10-feet on that plan, that's what that's talking about. The easement would be to the gas and electric companies.
Okay, so the road right-of-way would be much larger than 10 feet?
Right. I think John's talking about paving 20 feet, at least of it, yeah.
I mean, just by the information, I assumed that the only right-of-way he had was 10 feet. You're explaining to me that's not correct.
Well, it's not, I could see where someone could draw that conclusion, you know? So we have to do that better. If you had that question, other people will have that question. It says 10-foot wide easement, but that's in the outer end and then the middle part. And so we'll make that clearer when we, you know, if you have that question, other people will have that question, right?
You know, I mean.
Right now.
Why trucks are nine feet wide? I'm just kind of wondering.
Okay, Heather's a question, honestly.
I actually drove out there the other day just to see because I haven't been, I know where Timothy Bourne Cartway is, but I had never been down there. And it's actually now a dirt road, so, I mean, obviously, something more has to be done because, and you think of public safety and fire and also access and egress, I'm thinking too, because if you have 44 people living back there and say if there were a fire in the development in front of it, the people there couldn't get out. So, I mean, I guess that's maybe part of your plan going forward or maybe Mass Housing will take a look at that. But the road now is very narrow and it's dirt and it didn't say anywhere exactly what that road would look like and if that, how large an easement you actually have is by right.
So I think what's there now is the last person that built the house was able to build it if he expanded that dirt way to 16 feet. And I didn't measure it, but I think that's what it is, about 16 feet out there now in order to get his building permanent. So what exists there is 16 feet. John is, John, he's prepared to really make it a first-class road out there, you know?
Well, I've seen many of the developments that John has done and I have no issue with the quality of what he does and all of that, but I'm just looking at the information we have.
It looks that way, but.
And that we will need to have in order to refer it.
No, he's going to build a road to get there and he listens to what people suggest. We went up to Mass Housing and he had a different plan before and he changed it to have it become a little more of a social neighborhood, I think, was the first change that they suggested. And before we submitted anything really, fire, safety and DPW was very important. John went and talked to both, both the fire department and the DPW before we did any of this. I think that's just, we misread, we misread the plan the first time around. I think that that's all it is and we'll make it clearer.
Heather, you have a question?
I had a couple of other questions. Could you just flip down the other, the bigger plan?
Yep.
There seems to be, appears to be a very large lot to the others.
Where's his site?
So here's a.
Right, to the inside. Now come down the plan. Yeah, right, no, right next to where the site is. What is that property?
That's the Andre property.
Okay, so in other words, the right-of-way goes across that property?
Yeah, for everybody.
Okay, I'm just trying to follow. I see another large.
And they have the right to go through John's development down here too, the three people up here and anybody that develops, if that is developed, they would have the right to go through John's road that he built down. Yeah, well, Timothy Bourne Cartway out to the highway.
Okay. I would feel much more comfortable knowing how wide the right-of-way is, you know what I mean? There's right-of-ways in this town that are, it appears to be 10 feet on this.
Yeah.
I mean, and I'm sure John knows or someone knows what the width of this right-of-way is. I'd feel much more comfortable that we knew it and were able to address that.
So the, all the deeds say a right-of-way to Route 28.
Just like that.
To the state highway. So, you know, those were the good old days, right? When rights-of-way were, when rights-of-way were done and I think it, I'm not sure what it was. It might have been like a 12-foot right-of-way and then the one-house lot, the planning board required that it go to become a 16-foot right-of-way. And there's, so what do you do with them? I think there's lots of, there's lots of case law. When easements first started back in the old days, it used to be you can ride your horse from back there out to Route 28 and, you know, you can drive a truck on it now too and there are, it is, it has, so we're going to make it, we're going to make it big enough to, for people to drive on it safely and for emergency vehicles to do there.
Okay. Heather, a couple of quick questions.
I think Heather has a poll up to.
I just want to clarify for the board and I think Paul's comfortable with this, that I don't think there needs to be an expectation from the board that all these issues are resolved this evening. You need to raise them. Think of Mass Housing as the bank and you're raising for the benefit of the developer and the benefit of the bank. These are the issues that may cost money, that the developer, that may take time, that the developer needs to be aware of, that need to be addressed as they move through the development process. Open to the questions, but I want to make sure we're all.
Yeah, we're very aware and prepared on that issue, right?
Unit size of the units, are they two-bedroom, three-bedroom?
It's a mix. They're almost all three-bedrooms. Are they all three-bedrooms?
There's going to be a mixture.
Yeah.
Depending, two, three or four, depending on the market conditions. The first-time.
Okay, if you're going to do lots of answering, you should come over to the microphone.
Hi, John Drooly.
There are going to be two, three or four-bedroom homes, depending on the demand from the market. The first-time homebuyer homes are all planned to be three-bedroom with one or two-car garages. And, but again, we don't know until we have, get the lottery process and what the demand's going to be for those, but.
Are they going to be check-avoided in the plan or?
Yes, they will be.
Okay.
Yep, and out of the 44 homes proposed, 11 will be for first-time homebuyers.
Great.
And we have some pictures here we'll give to the board. We have three pictures of the development in Walk White that I'm just finishing. They had 24 houses and 20 condominiums. So we have three photographs that we took today. Two of these three are first-time homebuyers and one is a market rate home, so, just so you can get an idea of what this development will look like when I'm finished with it, presuming it's approved.
Okay, thanks.
Questions?
Well, just some other, you want to show us the pictures?
Can I just explain one thing about? I can have a picture. So these homes, the first-time homebuyer homes sold from 160,000 to 165,000. And with the lottery process, a lot of folks say, well, we're going to increase the needs on our fire department, police department. The priority to these homes in the lottery system is to Falmouth residents and they have to be a resident at least a year in Falmouth. So these are folks that are already living here, using our schools, using our fire, our town water. It only gives them an opportunity to actually be a homeowner and a taxpayer. And these are forever in perpetuity affordable homes, so they'll never be sold for a profit. And then what they do is the state mandates what the resale price might be. Out of the five developments we've done, we've only had two people resell. So these homes all had paved driveways, cobblestone aprons, cobblestone walkways. They cannot differentiate from any of the other homes. You have to be able to drive in and not be able to point them out. So just a little background on the photos that we're going to show you.
Okay, great. Can I ask one other question? I'm sorry. Monitoring agent, I mean, we've had some problems in the past, that's the only reason I ask that question.
So there's lots of monitoring. We have to like talk about the different, so the first thing will be the Getting Housing Assistance Corp. Two, they will conduct a lottery and actually, and from that lottery, they qualify the people to buy these affordable homes. And they do that. So they monitor the lottery process, right? And then afterwards, there are resales and we're hoping to have the Falmouth Housing Trust work in the resales to monitor that. The monitoring that I think you have in mind, I might have used the word audit, and they audit in order to monitor. You know, the state audits it very carefully at that. And the state, Mass Housing does that. They call the project administrator and they do the monitoring of the finances. That's what you have in mind, I think, right? The finances are that.
I'm making sure it stays affordable.
That's right.
Oh, that it stays affordable. Well, initially, initially it'll be Housing Assistance Corp., right? And it's in perpetuity. There's no question about that and.
Well, it's only in perpetuity if someone makes sure it stays that way.
And these will count to the town. If you do it this way, some programs, that's probably what you have in mind, some programs didn't qualify. You have affordable homes that probably are in perpetuity, but they're not counted to the town's quota. These definitely are an approved plan that Mass Housing is overseeing and they'll count, yeah.
I know, but the one agency we've had problems with was HAC, Housing Assistance Corporation, because after a home was subsequently resold, they didn't go through the process and we've lost some of those properties, affordable units. So that was the monitoring agent. The town has not had great success with HAC being the monitoring agent. Because they lose sight of it after John does the original development and the original sale. I'm not, I don't have a problem with that because I know that up front, everybody goes through the lottery, they're pre-qualified. It's the subsequent sales that we end up losing them to affordability.
Well, I'm not sure what John had in mind, actually, but we talked about having Falmouth Housing Trust for all the resales and I'm not sure whether that was his, I thought it was more just have a local person get involved, have the local person, but that might be, I'm not sure whether that was the reason. But that's what we're planning on, planning on doing with the, having Falmouth Housing Trust.
That we're in the area, I'd like to address a little audit.
Okay. Based on the staff report, you know, which is what I looked at, and the staff raised some concerns that just weren't in the plan as yet. So they didn't have an opportunity to see them. And one of them is nutrient management, having spent just an hour and a half talking about wastewater. Naturally, that's something of great concern to us, so we would want to see how that might be handled somewhere along the line.
So that was a tough act to follow. I, you know, I saw us in the lineup here, you know, we were.
And the other thing along with that too is that the pond, I mean, there's a brook that runs along the perimeter, one of the, in the back of the development there. And that discharges into Bourne's Pond.
Right here.
So I think that should, yes. So that, how that, how that is going to be handled, I think ought to be included in the plan as well.
Well, he.
I mean, in the whole nutrient management piece for the plan.
Well, we may not, we haven't dealt with that. But the, that way is shown and he actually shows in the plans the setback 200 feet from that.
Right, yes.
And that's something the state, not sure, I'm not, I'm not sure how much the state will get involved with the nutrient management, but they're not going to allow anything within, that's a state law. We can ask for waivers for town bylaws, but you can't ask for waivers for any state laws. So we have to deal with, I think it was called, I forget what the name of that river is now. It was called, but whatever that, whatever that is there, we have to comply with the Riverways Act for that.
Okay, my question is, would the developer have any thoughts about creating a decentralized septic system for the area?
You know, he tries to keep an open mind and everything, but as you look at. You know, he tries to keep an open mind and everything, but as you look at this area, and you see all these other lots, you know, right, right next door, it's empty. But if you look across on either side, it fits in generally, and none of the other, you know, this is affordable housing. You, the idea is, you can't, affordable homes can.
I just raised the question.
Yeah, you're raising the question.
You don't have to answer.
Okay. That's a long, hard question.
And one other, one other thing that I looked at, actually, when I drove out there, too, is, and looking at the plan, every single lot will have a house on it. And I'm thinking, if you have 44 families out there, wouldn't it be nice to have some open space where families could, or children, if there are children in the neighborhood, would have a place to go to?
So, we talked about that.
You did.
And that's, some, there is one empty lot. There is one that, and.
The one that, where the airpark property comes on it?
Yeah, it does. So, that's an empty lot, an empty space that you could do things on. We're not sure that John would do anything there that the people want, I think. You know, he wouldn't build them a big clubhouse, but, I mean, you know, anything reasonable, he'd do that. We're not sure that they want that. And we could talk about that. This, maybe check-avoiding isn't the best way to do, the affordable homes are usually for younger people, you know? I mean, that usually is probably an understatement, almost always, for younger people. And they, they have kids and they like to play. Sometimes it just might be better to put, if you're gonna have one little park area to put a, you know, a few of them close together, they have, they have fun, they're still part of the neighborhood. So, that's one of those things we're gonna have to work on, where the different affordable ones are, are if you wanna talk about having a, you know, a public area like that. Some places do, some places don't, you know?
And I have one more comment, too, and that's Route 28. You know, that's, that's the entrance there, the access, and then, is it Rebecca Jean Lane next to it?
Rebecca Anne Lane.
Rebecca. It's closer to Central Ave. So, you have Central Ave, Rebecca Anne Lane, and then Timothy Bourne Cartway. And there is a lot of traffic that goes by there. And I just thought you should really address in the plan, with the volume of homes that will be back in there now, adding four more homes to that, there'll be a lot of cars accessing and egressing from that road.
So, I think our plan.
And I think the intersection should be looked at carefully.
I think our plan will have to extend out there to show exactly what that looks like from there. And that's, right. We hadn't thought of that one, actually, right? So, that, and our plan should show that, what it looks like out in 28, where it meets.
Well, I know if I go to the up store, how difficult it is to take a left-hand turn coming out of the Kenyans Market, so, and that's almost opposite.
All the whole way of 28. We think that's one of the advantages, if we, it's potential that the people could have some type of public transportation, take advantage of it, you know, so they don't need two cars anyway. Your potential, it's not a far walk down to the, to the Kenyans, to Kenyans.
And one other, one other thought, too, in terms of the road, the access road in, and as Kevin was referring to that, I would think that whatever that road becomes, whether it's 10 feet, 12, or 14, or 16, that it would have to accommodate a school bus.
Well, it'll be bigger than that. It'll be bigger than that. It'll accommodate all the emergency vehicles. That was one, that, that's just, we didn't make that clear enough in the plan. I think that's all that is. The road'll be, the road'll be big enough.
You have a question?
No, she's just asking.
Yeah, I'll stop for now.
No, that's fine.
I do think the list that we have from Heather to you, even if we haven't mentioned it tonight, our expectation is those things are gonna be covered in the next plan, not that, just because I didn't mention them, that they need to be addressed also. Do we have any other questions? Questions from the public? What's the board's pleasure?
Heather?
Heather?
I think you can ask the town manager to draft a letter to Mass Housing and bring to you for your next meeting for approval.
Okay. I'll make a motion to ask the town manager to draft a letter to Mass Housing regarding the comments that we have made tonight, what the staff has included, and bring it to our next meeting, so we can vote on it and get it up there, is what you're saying.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Passed.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next, I have business. I think Mr. Putnam and I were considering, talking about whether we could move the Ballymead discussion, jump it over the discussion of the town council and hearing presses.
Works for me.
Do we need a motion for that, or you guys?
I'll make a motion to move it up on the agenda.
Aye. Mr. Putnam, we are just moving the Ballymead discussion to the current topic.
Mr. Jones?
All right. So, we started this process last week. Article 32 of the November 2002 Annual Town Meeting was a vote to assess a capital improvement fee to the Ballymead High Service, or the High Service Area, excuse me, which includes the Ballymead area, in order to recoup a cost of approximately $400,000 for connecting that neighborhood to the town water system. This article has, for many years, it's languished and it has not been acted upon, and the board is trying to tie up loose ends, if you will. I don't know if we have, do we have any presentation, or do we want to simply move into hearing public comment? Mr. Duffy, I'd see you.
Evening, Mr. Chairman. I prepared and sent over a proposal through the town manager this week. I trust that you each have it.
Yes.
One preliminary matter, I did receive today the settlement agreement that had been signed by all the parties, and it was informed that it has been filed in court, so it can be revealed at your discretion now as the board. The, I've worked on this Ballymead capital improvement fee in connection with Mr. Jack. When I was here last week, I explained to you that there were several pieces of information that were missing. We now have them. This capital, proposed vote for the capital improvement fee is more or less, actually, it is complete. As Mr. Putnam mentioned, it is based upon Article 32, which was passed by the November 2002 Annual Town Meeting, which appropriated $530,000 to build a 16-inch transmission main across cross-country between the Tech Park Water Tower and the Ballymead subdivision. In fact, the cross-country transmission line was built in the year 2004. The amount of money spent was 3,000, excuse me, $357,939.61. So, it came in quite a bit under the $530,000 that was appropriated. So, the principal amount of the capital improvement fee proposed is 357,939.61. The interest rate is 3%. I checked with the town finance director, Jennifer Patey, who informed me that this 3% is the rate of interest that the town currently pays on its borrowings. This answers the question, I think, that Mr. Murphy raised about what is a fair and appropriate interest rate on the principal. The area of the capital improvement fee, which would be added to the water bills, is the Ballymead neighborhood, consisting of the following roads: Falmouth Woods Road, Devonport Fairway Point Road, Equestrian Lane, Longshank Circle, Cairn Ridge Road, Falmouth Ridge Road, Summit Lane, Wellwood Circle, Sorrel Circle, Saddleback Lane, Hill and Plain Road, Mattingale Circle, Paddock Circle, Green Tree Circle, and Highwood Lane. The amount to be assessed per service has been determined by doing a survey of the properties in the Ballymead neighborhood. There are 307 water services, or potential water services, in the neighborhood, including single-family homes, which is the largest category with 258. There are 17 vacant lots, 29 condominiums, there's one association unit, and there are two golf courses. So, the capital improvement fee spread out over the 307 water service units comes to $1,165.93 per water service unit. We have made a proposal to allow homeowners, or actually, anybody in the water who's subject to the capital improvement fee, to apportion it over a period of time. This is very similar to what we do with betterments. Although this is technically not a betterment, because it is not going in your tax bill, it is going on your water bill. The proposal is to allow property owners, upon application to the water department, to apportion it over a period of 25 years, which basically, I believe, will bring the annual fee down to somewhere in the magnitude of $50. Is that correct? All right. The fee will be added to the first water bill to be issued by the town of Falmouth subsequent to the one that just came out, so that'll be in the, in November of 2014. Anybody who has a vacant lot, and there are not too many, there's only 17, will be able to apply to the Board of Selectmen to defer the payment of the capital improvement fee until such time as the vacant land is built upon. And then the capital improvement fee will be collected as part of the building permit application for the lot, and it will be paid in full. Lots, capital improvement fees that are deferred but not paid, will not be apportionable, they'll be paid in a large sum. And finally, if there is a transfer of ownership of the property, arrangements must be made to pay the capital improvement fee at the time of this transfer. So, that is what I submitted to you, and, you know, you're gonna have a hearing, you're gonna listen to people, you're gonna find out what's on their mind, and if you want to make some changes, I can make them and bring it back to you at a later time, okay?
Any questions from the board before we take a couple of comment? All right. Feedback?
Good evening. Or maybe morning, almost. And I'd like to apologize to my wife. We were supposed to go out to dinner, so perhaps I'll take her to breakfast. With your indulgence, we will make this quick, I would just like to recapitulate for you and for the audience and for viewers, a brief history of where we were and where we are. And then, Mr. Putnam, if it's okay with you, there's a couple of members of Ballymead who'd like to speak also. This evening, I'm representing the Board of Directors and the Water Committee that was formed a few years ago to study the problem of low water pressure and low flow. Until August of 2004, the water entered Ballymead and passed through a booster pumping station. That pumping station provided adequate water pressure to all elevations in the community. In 2004, the town built the water main from the tower in Technology Park to Ballymead, assuring Ballymead residents there would be no adverse effects. The town switched the source of the Ballymead water supply then to the park tower. Immediately, many residents, including me, of Ballymead noticed a severe drop in their water pressure and flow and started complaining to the town. The Board of Directors of the Ballymead Property Owners Association spent years in good faith trying to negotiate with the town to address the problem. But when no solution was reached, by the end of 2010, the BPOA, which is the Ballymead Property Owners Association, elected to file suit in Barnstable Superior Court in order to force the town to restore our lost water pressure. That suit was filed in February of 2011. In September of 2013, our town council, Mr. Duffy, sitting here, suggested that perhaps we could settle this via mediation. Our board and our council agreed. That mediation took place on Saturday, March 8th, many of you in attendance. The agreement reached between the BPOA and the town resulted in a settlement, which Mr. Duffy said has been filed. Copies, I assume you've all had copies since you all signed it, most recently, and he asked if you wanted to disclose it. I would like to disclose it, since it's now public. One issue for us was the, that the town dig up and visually inspect the 12-inch main within Ballymead Development to confirm the size of the transmission line from the tower. The reason we asked for that is that the drawings we had, which were town drawings, showed an 8-inch line for partial into Ballymead. If that was true, and the line could be reconstructed to a 16-inch line, we would have picked up another 5 to 7 PSI. As it turned out, when the town did dig it up, it was a 16-inch line, so we have the flow and the pressure which we have today. The town of Falmouth was to pay us $50,000 once an article was placed in the warrant for the November 2014 Town Meeting to raise an additional $115,000 for a total of $165,000, which would be paid to the plaintiff, that's us. The Board of Selectmen were to promote, support, and recommend this appropriation. That $165,000 will allow us to reimburse all those who have had water flow and water pressure problems for the installation of a pumping system in their homes. There are variable systems available at varying costs, but we believe $5,000 is an adequate amount to correct the problem. This $165,000 would cover approximately 33 homes at $5,000 per home. If there were more homes, we would simply allocate less money per home to resolve that problem. I'd like to now ask Mr. Markowski to come up here. Jim, and he will explain to you what he did at his home.
Thanks, George. George says, my name is Jim Markowski, I live on Summit Lane, and in 2004, we had an experience of a water pressure problem. We had a problem with the shower and on second floor, and also with the appliances operating. Irrigation system completely shut down. What I had to do is I had to have a design of a pressurized tank and pumping system installed in my house for about $4,300, and that essentially rectified the situation. However, it's an ongoing issue, would you expect, too, you've got the pumping sound all the time, not all the time, but lots of time, you've got a maintenance issue, and then I would expect probably in the next five years, I'd have to replace the pumping system. So, it's not an easy fix. So, when I hear things like a capital improvement, we had a degradation in both our flow and pressure, so I can't really see this as a capital improvement. Thank you.
And I'd like to ask Shen Baxter, who is former president of the BPOA, to speak to his issues.
Good evening, and thank you for having us here tonight to tell us our story. I was Shen Baxter. I was fortunate enough to be the president of the association when this issue heated up, and unfortunate enough to be at an information consolidation meeting today, and here I am. So, thank you for having us. What I'd like to do is to start this off, since this meeting is about betterment, I'd like to read you a definition of betterment as defined in Black's Law Dictionary.
Mr. Baxter.
Yes.
I'm gonna stop you right there, because this is a capital improvement fee. This is not a betterment. A betterment would be applied to your real estate bill. This is a capital improvement fee that is going to be applied to the water bill.
It's either a betterment or an improvement.
It is a capital improvement fee. It is not a betterment.
Okay, all right. Let me just read the definition, the symbol. An improvement put upon an estate which enhances its value more than mere repairs. The term is applied to denote the additional value which an estate acquires in consequence of some public improvement, such as laying out a road or widening a street. With that in mind, Mr. Markowski's story is one of 34 or 35 that's going on in Ballymead. He is not better off as a result of hooking us up to the water tower. He failed to mention that his neighbor, two years ago, had. He failed to mention that his neighbor, two years ago, had to replace the bladder in the water pump at a cost of $700. So the ongoing installation and fees and maintenance on these personalized pumps are very expensive. There's also an additional 50 to 60 people who are basically in an appliance management mode in their house. "Mom, I'm going to take a shower, will you turn off the washing machine?" They're that close to needing a pump themselves. So we do not have adequate pressure in Ballymead. Again, we've been working with the town for several years now, and we never did come to a solution on the problem. We did have a test in, I think in the fall, on two roads where we had engineers, we had town officials, we had the fire department, and a lot of individuals involved in it, where we had pressure gauges in houses on that street, and we opened up the hydrant at the end of that street, and immediately saw a pressure drop, in some cases below the 20 PSI minimum required. The people who were there, or saw the charts, or heard about it in discussions, are not happy, and they're really not better off. So we, as a community, are here tonight to do a couple of things. Number one, common sense tells us all that for the 10 years, there was no betterment, absolutely no betterment for Ballymead residents as a result of going onto this tower. There are still some technical and financial issues that are loose, and we are formally requesting that any vote or proposal on this capital improvement, or better, be postponed, if not totally discarded. That was going to be the end of my talk, but earlier in the evening, waiting for admission into this hall, some people started talking about a statute of limitations on such an item. And I don't know if there is one or not, I really am not sure. But at this point, 10, 12, 14 years after the fact, slamming this capital improvement down on us is absolutely ludicrous, and I strongly urge its postponement or discarding. Thank you.
Mr. Heath?
Austin Heath, Five Paddock Circle. In 2001, I started getting involved with water in Ballymead. I'm frankly quite tired of water in Ballymead, but that was when Heather Harper, this acting administrator, called, what? Called a meeting at which she and Mr. Duffy and Mr. Jack, CLSV, their lawyer, said, asked Tom Carl and I, because I was on the board at that time and in charge of the transition from CLSV to BPOA, to a meeting. We were there because we were very unhappy with being charged a fee of 25% for operating the pump station by the town. We were also charged all the operating expenses CLSV incurred in running the pump station. In essence, the town was doing nothing but collecting the fee. This went on until essentially the tower was hooked up to Ballymead. That's 90 years of fees for high service that we paid, for which we received nothing. And when the idea to hook Ballymead came up, Troy Clarkson, who was then chairman, and Bob Rittenhour, came to Ballymead. I was on the board then, too. We had been assured through Dick Schultz, who is also a past president, lots of past presidents around here, that there would be no change in service. They presented the plan as no change in service. Because there was going to be no change in service, I actually wrote a letter to all of the residents of Ballymead, saying we should adopt this plan. I stood up and spoke for it at that meeting. But when we were hooked up, there was a change in service, and it was not the 10 to 12 PSI. I compared third-party tests. This is not my measurements. These are third-party tests. The best I can figure out, and you have it, all of you have these numbers, was 23 PSI. Even at 12, at the highest elevation, it'd be a 23% loss of pressure. If you reduce pressure, you also reduce flow. In spite of the fact that this is a gravity system, and therefore safer for fire safety, the fact is to maintain the pressures we have today is operated in the top one foot of the tower. We are as dependent on pumps today as we were dependent on pumps with the pump station, except we don't have as much pressure. Article 32 called for an improvement fee. The key word is improvement. What improvement have we received? None. Absolutely none. I am not on the board now, and I did not vote on the settlement agreement. I don't know whether I would've or not. It didn't accomplish anything for us. There was no systemic improvement in the system. I don't think that this fee should be imposed on us. I'm fully cognizant of the financial situation of the town and its need for money. There's no question we need money. Eventually, we're going to have to have an override. Whether anyone wants to oppose it or not, we're going to need it to meet all of our But I don't believe it's right to impose a fee on a neighborhood that didn't get any improvements, in fact, had a detriment out of the connection to the tower. I think it was a mistake to ever connect us to that tower. Studies by Tada and Howard indicated it was a private system. In the first place, we don't think it was ever a private system, because on the, at the registry of deeds, there is an easement for the pump station lot, perpetual easement, you don't need to own it to put your equipment in there. It says that if you turn the water on, you accept the system, and that was done. We have to rely on what is on the registry of deeds. Those are agreements that were made, not by me, before I ever lived here. They were made by the developers, Falmouth Woods Development Corporation and the town, and negotiated probably with Dick Witt and Bill Owen, who was head of the water department and public works departments at that time. We rely on those things on the registry of deeds. With the proposal that was made tonight, I don't know if you've sent that to Mr. Boddy or not. He's our lawyer. We don't have one here tonight. You do. Incidentally, on that, if it's adopted, I would propose that you also adopt a prepayment discount if it was paid in front by people at the very beginning. Reduces your borrowing costs, reduces the interest costs, and especially people my age, and I'm older than all of you, even Pat. I'm older than you are.
Good, I'm glad to hear somebody is.
And I'd rather clean it up myself, so that when a house is sold and we die in it, it's just easier for our son. But I don't think there should be an assessment on this. There's no, there just is no value. We have gotten nothing for our money, and we still have some flow problems. As was explained, we thought that what was on the GIS was what was built. It's not. We were going to pick up at 5 to 7 PSI if they put a bigger line in. It's already there. We're not gonna pick up a thing. We're marginal. We do meet the residential requirements. Before, we met the commercial requirements. And this is evidenced by the fact that when the new country club was built, they had to put in a 40,000-gallon tank with backup pumps and everything else, because the flow was no longer there. We don't have the fire protection that we did before. It's interesting. The thermoengineering tests ran two pump trucks, that's 4,000 gallons per minute two pump trucks can throw out. I figured it out that with the flow rate of 1,450 gallons per minute, or maybe 1,500 gallons per minute, that in about four hours, we can empty that $1 million tank. At 4,000 gallons per minute, that 40,000-gallon tank is gonna last 10 minutes. The capacity to fill the existing tank is too low. The old pump station, and I don't think we could probably ever put that up again, was 1,750 on each of two fire pumps, plus the regular pumps. During that test, they were able to run two pump trucks. We've never duplicated that test. When our engineer in the latest test this fall asked to open a 5-inch opening on the hydrant, that's the big one, to get more flow, we were not allowed to. And still, on the tests that they ran, the residential went down below 20 PSI. We meet the minimum requirements. And unless you think I'm speaking for my own benefit, I have 62 PSI right now. I had over 80 before. I'm perfectly happy with 62. It runs absolutely anything I own. But I don't think the right thing has been done by other people in the community. I'm old-fashioned, real old-fashioned. I was brought up that you were supposed, there is a difference between right and wrong. And just because you can do something doesn't mean you have to do something. I don't think this fee should be assessed. I don't think there's any justification for it. And we're just as badly off as the day we began. If we had the Asbills that they have now, because they were at the, we may or may not have signed a settlement. We expected to do what was on the public records. We were never given the Asbills and requests for documents, but they were there when the people observed the test, and we still don't have them. I think that the right thing to do is to not ever collect this fee. Indeed, Article 32 is modified by the Board of Selectmen. And it's recorded in Book 23196, page 24. This calls for CLSV to chip into this. Remember, Ballymead Property Owners Association, Inc., or the people in Ballymead, have never owned a single pipe or a single pump. This has never, ever been ours. Each and every one of us, and I looked up the payment, paid to connect, I paid in 1997 to connect to the town water system, and I paid the town. I did not pay to connect to a private system. I have paid every water bill that came in. I am a customer of the town. There is nothing at the DEP that indicates that Ballymead, that Ballymead Development Corporation or CLSV owned this system. This was a unilateral decision, in my opinion. And as such, why are we paying for a unilateral decision that didn't improve anything? In fact, we have lower pressure and lower flow. But this certificate of vote, which says CLSV will pay a part of this, was signed by all, it says, certificate of vote, all the directors voted for. Three of you were on that board. And it says there will be an improvement, and this is in 2008, this is after the connection. There's been no improvement since 2008. That what you can do, and maybe Mr. Duffy will say that you can, assess his fee, you can do it. But it's not right, and you shouldn't. Thank you.
George Sanborn, again. I want to thank you all for coming to that mediation. We have put an end to the litigation. I want to make that clear to everybody. We did settle it. You have agreed to support $165,000 to us to improve the flow in the water in those homes that are affected. Therefore, does it really make sense, after giving us the money, to say now you have to pay a betterment or an improvement or a capital improvement, whatever moniker you put on it? And do you think it makes sense to impose on us a water bill in November punishing us? And yet, we still don't have that check so that people can put in those pumps? It probably, we wouldn't get that check until what? It probably, we wouldn't get that check until, what, January, after the town meeting? It'll probably take a few months for people to put those pumps, including me, into our homes. I don't think it's fair either to pay it or to start imposing a penalty in November on our water bills. But I do want to thank you for ending the litigation, because our legal bills have ended. That's it. Thank you, and I think we're all, Joe?
Yes, I'd like to say a few words. My name is Joe Novaleen. I'm a resident of Ballymead for the past three years, but I've been a property owner in Falmouth since the early 80s. I have somewhat of an engineering background, although I'm no expert in hydraulics. My first problem has been trying to understand how this situation ever even arrived, based on whatever engineering was done at the time, or the quality control or the acceptance testing that was done. But as George Sanborn just said, that's in the history book. However, I find it very difficult when you have a development with 274 homes and a huge tax base, how did it take 10 years to get this resolved? You were aware during that 10 years, there were difficulties in Ballymead, there were property sales issues that were in, people's homes were impacted because hanging over their heads was water pressure. It was in the newspaper all the time. My wife and I had a problem. We wanted to make sure if we bought in Ballymead that the water pressure was going to be okay in our house. Why should we have had to have gone through that? And this is after a betterment. Now, it's been resolved, but it took the association suing the town. I have a real issue with that. Should be working together. But that obviously didn't take place. But now that it's settled, I have a real issue regardless if it was $5, of you folks taking the position of thinking that this improvement should be built. I think it's wrong. I think it's time to stand up behind the thing, put it to bed, but do it right. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I just want to address something that Joe and to a lot of you folks. You wonder why it took 10 years to, or more to solve this. I can tell you that 11 years ago, I was elected to the Board of Selectment. And roughly the next year, the same settlement that you signed for was proposed to the board and was refused back then. This board collectively has gone through, over those years, that same basic settlement. And quite candidly, when Mr. Putnam sat in with our town manager and assistant town management council, he came back with the settlement, I was kind of astonished, because we wasted a lot of time, we wasted a lot of money on our legal fees as well as your own. I just want to say that that same settlement offer was proposed roughly 10 years ago. So that would have saved us a lot of time and energy. So that, that needs to be addressed. I don't know who the board was at the time.
They're here.
Folks.
They're here.
One at a time, please.
But that proposal.
Mr. Sanborn.
Sorry.
That proposal was there.
Mr. Heath. That proposal was sort of presented, and I mean that, by Bob Rittenhour in the working group meetings and some peripheral meetings to it. But that proposal varied all over the lot, believe me. And first of all, it was 2,500 for 22 homes. That's it. Secondly, originally, that proposal was to be spread over a credit, not cash to pay for anything, a credit over 20 years against the water bill. First of all, it didn't, it wasn't enough money. And second of all, it didn't cover enough homes. This is the first time that it's gone up over a threshold that actually would take care of those most impacted. The first time. You cannot put that in your house with a pressure take for $2,500. You just can't do it. But that's, it was never reduced to writing either as a proposal to us. It was always verbiage and always said, this change or that change. But that, that's the reason. Whether this proposal had been made at that time, I really don't know. It doesn't really do the job that should be done. But I, I can't tell you, because I can't tell you. I may or may not have been on the board, as a matter of fact, at that time. Been on, off, on, I'm off. I'm not going back on. That's guaranteed. But, but that's the reason. It never got concrete enough, and it never covered enough people or enough money. We can't go, just go to 22 people and say, here's $2,000, and aren't you well off? You can't do it.
Anyone else? Questions or comments from the board?
Well, I'm all, I'm brand-new to it, but I can usually kind of work through what people are saying, and I would say this is incredibly mysterious. I, I hear what you're saying, and I sit here and say, for 14 years, this problem has gone on. Then I hear that it's a six-inch pipe. No, it's a 10-inch pipe. No, it's a 16-inch pipe. And I think, well, it should have been a 16 all along, I guess. And then I hear the money that you have spent individually in each one of your homes, and I'm going to tell you, I lived in a house one time that I had to say, turn off the washing machine, because I'm going to take a shower. So I am listening to you, and I'm thinking of the amount of time that has gone by, and every day you use water. Then I listened to Mr. Murphy. Then I listened to Mr. Duffy. And then I've listened to Mr. Ray. And I think the issue in my mind is the fact it has gone on too long. And I think if there's an offer on the table, there had been another offer on the table, it's time to accept the offer. It's, it's too, it's, it's very, it's, I don't want to say it can't be solved, but it's taken 14 years. And anything that is an irritant for that length of time, I would have solved it somewhere. And I understand that you, you are very upset. I'd be very upset about having low water pressure for 14 years, but I would have figured out a way to solve it. And whoever's on that board, and whoever is talking, and whatever information, it's the best I can do is to listen to you. You are very good, very good. You presented your case. But I've also heard it on the town side. And to be very honest, it's the first time, other than reading what's in the paper, that I knew anything about it. So I just think that my bottom line is, it's time to end it. That is, that's, I just don't know in 14 years, any issue such as this. And you've got a beautiful place to live, and you want everything to work well, and it should. It's beautiful there. And, but, it's, it's, in my mind, it needs to be over.
Back corner.
Just a couple of words. I've heard everything here tonight. I usually don't speak. My name is Bill Lennon. I live in Ballymead. I finally realized, it's always been a 16-inch pipe. I bought in 2003. My water pressure went down in 2004. Not to the extent that some of these people that are on the top of Ballymead went, but it significantly went down. We can still live with it. But my problem here, listening to all of this thing tonight, is that why, if our water pressure has gone down, no matter how far it's gone down, do we still get assessed this fee that was, that was placed upon us in 2002? So I would hope that you'd all bear that in mind for the rest of the Ballymead residents. Okay? Thank you very much.
I would like to point out that the reason why we're doing this is because town meeting voted it. And so, one of the things that the board may want to consider is consulting with council before we make any decisions about what steps might need to be taken if we wanted to avoid doing this. Because you have to understand, town meeting takes certain actions, and this board has to adhere to those actions. And if this is something that might require town meeting to repeal this, if you will, then we have to know that first before we make any decisions here.
Thank you.
Mr. Sanborn, you had something new?
Yes.
George Sanborn, and I'd like to address Ms. Moffett. It has been settled, but it took a lawsuit to settle it.
And that took, excuse me.
And you said if we lived with it. We didn't live with it. You've just heard from some of the members, they've put in pumps. We did workarounds. I bought in all-new fixtures, all-new fixtures. I spent thousands of dollars modifying the entire house. So we didn't live with it. We worked around it. That's what we did. And, and in terms of this Article 32, which I have in front of me, it says, the cost, this is in the middle of it, "to see if the town will appropriate the sum of $530,000 for the purpose of installing a water transmission main to connect Ballymead with the new high-pressure service." I'm not sure I'd call a tower a high-pressure service. But here's the important, "the cost of which shall be recovered in part." The words "in part." Mr. Duffy, how would you interpret those words?
Leave the chair, please. Why don't you finish your quote, and we can ask Mr. Duffy to answer your questions.
"In part of the betterment assessment, or to take any other action in this matter." It seems to me, as I read this article, which I'd be happy to give you, that you do have discretion.
Did you want Mr. Duffy to answer your question?
Sure.
Mr. Duffy, would you mind? "The cost of which shall be recovered in part."
Don't specify a part, so it's anywhere between 1 and 99, and nine-tens, really. I mean, it's a matter of discretion for the board. And to get to your question about, you know, it is a town meeting vote that tells you to recover the cost, so you're following the dictates of town meeting, and if there's a way to avoid that, I'm not prepared to give you an answer tonight.
And I should also note that the last section, Mr. Sanborn, you say, "or do or take any other action in this matter." That is standard town meeting nomenclature, if you will. But it, it usually requires, and I know, forgive me, I'm the chairman of the Board of Selectment, not the moderator for town meeting, but the town meeting moderator usually does require that town meeting debate and amend any articles within the scope of the article. And so that's what some of this language is here for. I don't know that if it gives, if it gives us the latitude to say, no, we're not going to collect this money, just so you understand that. And that's why we'll have to consult with, one at a time, folks. All right, come on.
"In whole or in part," didn't Mr. Duffy just say, that's 1 to 99?
He did say that.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll add this to the record.
And I'd like to answer, Ms. Moffett, if I could. The reason this takes so long is, we spent a year in a working group. I presented to the board a petition to address this issue. It got referred to a working group chaired by Pat. Over a year, we went into this with all kinds of documents presented. A whole pile was, which you've obviously never seen, presented to the Board of Selectment, and you might want to look at them. So it has been ongoing. And in the courts, either one lawyer or another is going hunting, or they got a vacation, or they've got another case. The American justice system is totally broken. It's not timely. It doesn't serve the purpose. It's unaffordable to the average American. That's what takes so long. But we did that after, going after and after. Our petition was never brought back to the board and put on the agenda for a vote. And that's one of the reasons I participated in a decision to go to court. There was no vote on the petition. There was no vote for a remedy.
Thank you.
Last call. Anything new?
All right. How would the board like to proceed?
I just want to address a couple of things that I know, or have been told, that happened during this negotiation. I understand during the mediation process that it was made aware that the board.
Hold on one second.
Hold it.
Because there are some aspects of the mediation.
You are allowed to discuss the settlement. We are not allowed to discuss what was said in mediation by anybody.
Okay. All right. The other, the other issue that I was going to speak on is in regard to whether you have any better, you're better off now versus when you were before. I understand, I understand that your water pressure is less. But over the years, and it has been many years, hearing about this process, I have been made aware that if you had just a pump station and the power failed, that your development could be in jeopardy in the midst of a fire type of scenario, that the pump station was operated, in fact, by electricity. So that did add, in my mind, some benefit. I know it does not provide you the same water pressure that you have. And I have also been told, and Mr. Heath, you confirmed it tonight, that it does meet, although it might be lower than what you had, it does meet residential standards. We're trying to address those folks who are close to the residential standard in the settlement to be able to move that pressure up higher. Those are the only things I wanted to say.
No, gentlemen, I don't want to keep going back and forth on this all night long. What I'd like to do, and I'm, personally, I'm inclined to take this under advisement for the next few weeks. We have a meeting on May 13th, or, excuse me, May 19th, which is scheduled. We can have this on the agenda then in order for us to take action. I think there are a few questions I have for Mr. Duffy between now and then. And we will, I'll make sure this gets on the agenda before any significant presentations. And again, my apologies, folks.
Can I, can I just add one?
No.
Clarifying comment to what Mr. Murphy just said.
No, sir. No, sir. I do not want to keep going back and forth, because we'll be here all night, as everybody brings up one point that they want to rebut. What I want to do is move things along. We can bring this back in two weeks. It's my recommendation to the board. And if anybody has any points that they want to make, like I said, we'll make sure it's on early in the agenda. And if you want to make any final points to the board before we take any action in two weeks, you'll be more than welcome to.
Mr. Mark. Mr. Chairman, I move to continue this hearing until May 19.
Second. Okay. So we have a motion, a second, to continue this until May 19. Any discussion amongst the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
Yes.
One opposed, the motion carries four to one with Ms. Moffett in dissent. So we'll see you in two weeks. All right, the next item on our agenda, and folks, if you wouldn't mind leaving quietly so we can continue our agenda, we do have a number of items still to dispense with.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda, we have, folks, there's a discussion with town council of hearing processes and procedures. We have a few things here, some information that was brought to the board. Ladies and gentlemen, please. All right. Mr. Duffy, thank you for staying with us at this late hour.
Mr. Duffy, thank you for staying with us at this late hour. I had asked, I had put this on the agenda because there have been some court cases recently that we've had to deal with, and the ABCC remanding the decision to us last year regarding a liquor store license. And I thought it was worthwhile for the board to have some information about hearings, our legal obligations, and the processes involved with that. I don't know. Do you have anything you want to start with, or shall I go?
Well, I just have a couple of preliminary remarks. Unfortunately, I really didn't have notice of this, that I was going to be on your agenda for this issue until Friday afternoon. And I didn't get a copy of the documents you wanted me to review until this morning. But we have kind of generally talked about a procedure for the board, particularly the Board of Selectmen, to follow when you're conducting hearings. And I think it's a good idea, and I think it is something that we should work with. It will require, I think, me participating with staff, the town manager and assistant town manager, perhaps coming back to you with a specific proposal for several hearings. And the way I see it is that you have three principal types of hearings that you get involved in, and they're each a little different, and the procedure may be a little different. And specifically, the issues that you have to address and the issues that you have to decide are different. We have alcoholic beverage licensing and violation hearings, which are conducted under Chapter 138. And those appeals go to the Alcoholic Beverage Control Commission for an appeal. The second type is the wetlands hearings, which you hold under the zoning bylaw. And that matter is appealed to Superior Court for a trial de novo, but basically have a hearing all over again in Superior Court with the judge acting as the Board of Selectmen. Finally, you have hearings involving personnel hearings where you're taking disciplinary action against personnel that you appoint, not personnel that the town manager appoints necessarily, but the ones that you appoint, which include members of boards and committees, so on and so forth. So, each one of those is a little different, and I would probably suggest to you that there be a slightly different procedure for each one. However, there are several things that are in common with respect to all the hearings, and I would just get to that in a minute. First issue you have to address is, look at the role of your staff. If you go up, for example, to the Board of Appeals, down to the Conservation Commission, you'll see that the staff kind of guides the board through the hearings. That is a procedure that this board would benefit from, for whether it be the town manager or the assistant town manager, or me, or someone from my office, but someone to help guide you through these hearings rather than to try and freelance your way through them, as sometimes happens. Another thing that should be determined is, at the very beginning, is who are the witnesses? They should be notified and make sure that they will attend and testify on behalf of the facts that they know about. And if subpoenas have to be issued to witnesses, they can be issued to the appropriate people at the appropriate time. Another thing that should be on your procedure is a statement of issues. For example, when you have a wetlands hearing, it's under the zoning bylaw, and the issues relate to the aquatic resources of the town. So, there should be a series of questions that would direct your inquiry so that you can make findings about aquatic resources. If you have an alcoholic beverage license case, you have to determine, at least in the case of issuing a license, you have to determine public need. Well, public need's kind of a term of art. It's a little hard to determine what it is, but we can help you with some questions that might elicit facts that you could use to determine whether there's public need. If there's violations, for example, sale of alcohol to minors, that would, again, require a different tact of questioning, but also different witnesses to talk about it. Another thing that would be very important when you conduct a hearing is, you must remember that you have to build a record, and that your decision has to be based on that record, and there has to be facts in the record that will support your decision on appeal. So, that would involve taking documents or exhibits that are used, introducing them, building a record, identifying them, and putting them in the minutes of the meeting or of the hearing. As far as an order of proceedings is concerned, all of these hearings are going to more or less go along the same steps. You're going to start with an opening, which will identify the parties, it will identify the issues, it will identify the questions that you have to determine. Then you will hear from the moving party with witnesses, documents, exhibits, questions. You will then hear from the responding party with witnesses, documents, exhibits, so on and so forth. There will be rebuttal testimony allowed, generally speaking. And finally, there will be a closing where you will bring the matter to a close, you will deliberate, and you will come to a decision. Among the other issues I think that you have to address and be cognizant of would be a procedure for cross-examination. Are you going to allow the parties to cross-examine the other parties, or are you going to require that all questions go through the chair? How are you going to run the meeting? How are you going to be concerned about such things as decorum, and so on and so forth? One of the issues that I see with this board, and not just this board, but boards in general, is that there are, you have lived in this town for many years, and you know it intimately, you know a lot of the facts about the town, and you think you know the answer to a question. But having the answer to the question in your head doesn't help you because it doesn't get in the record, and it doesn't get reflected on appeal when it goes up to the judge or it goes up to the ABCC. For example, let's say you decide, or in your mind, you know that there's a particularly dangerous intersection. Well, it doesn't really do you any good to deny a liquor license on the ground that it's located at a dangerous intersection unless, even though you know it's a dangerous intersection in your heart, unless you have someone from the police department come in with some statistics to say, "Well, yes, we've had so many accidents over there," or "there's this problem," or "that problem," or "the sightlines are bad," or something. It doesn't really, just because it's in your head isn't going to help. It's got to have some support in extrinsic evidence. Another thing I think that would be valuable to discuss in a procedure would be how to conduct site visits, the necessity for site visits, what you do at the site visit if you take a site visit, whether you want to do them individually or as a whole. There should be some procedure in there about ex parte communications. That's where an individual member of the board takes evidence apart from the other members of the board. It's basically a frowned upon procedure, as are personal investigations, where one member of the board sets out to try and come to a determination based upon facts found by the individual member, not shared with the others. Finally, you want to close the hearing and focus your deliberation on findings of facts that will support your decision. And what I would propose would be, following consultation with Julian and Heather, and perhaps some of you individually, come up with a procedure for these three principal types of hearings that we could reduce to writing that you could refer to at the appropriate time. There would be the alcoholic beverage hearings, the wetlands hearings, and the personnel hearings. And I think you get rid of the other one, the dock hearings, by passing them on to the police department. So, I think it's a worthy project that should be undertaken. I'd be happy to help you figure it out.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Mr. Murphy?
I just have one question. Specifically, in something like this that can be used, the word "procedures," I would more or less like it to be called guidelines, how to conduct the hearing. Because procedures, if you miss a step...
No, no. I understand you, Mr. Murphy. It would not be a rigid set of procedures where you would trip yourself up by overlooking one. There would be flexibility in effect. In each case, you would, it would be declared at the beginning...
You and I think in the same.
That you would have the flexibility to alter the procedure as appropriate, or to, you know, whatever.
Okay. Okay, I understand. As long as, I didn't want to cut it in semantics, but I also didn't want someone to say, "You didn't do step number five."
Right.
Especially if it was a written procedure.
Questions? Other questions from the board? I had a few questions, and one of them, Ms. Flynn had asked about, was about times on the agenda. And I know that other regulatory bodies, the Conservation Commission, for example, doesn't put times on their agenda. I think tonight was probably a perfect example of why sometimes agenda items run over. And if you could share your opinion about this, but if we say that a hearing is going to start at, say, 7:30, but we don't end up getting it to until 8:30, is there a problem? Or if we advertise something for 8:30 and we start at 8 o'clock?
No. The important item on the notice is the date and the start of the meeting. You cannot promise that you will take an individual item at a particular time. Now, I've appeared on behalf of the town before the Board of Appeals recently, and I've waited around all night to be heard, and that's just the way it happens.
Well, I do have a comment. I know from previous boards that the board always tried to adhere to the time for which it was noted.
And I think it's laudable to try and adhere.
Well, I think, too, that it was an expectation of the public or the people involved. And I know sometimes whoever was chairing the meeting would try to manage the time so that the discussion ended at the time for the hearing. But if not, they would stop the discussion and say, "We have a public hearing now at 8:30, so we're going to hold this discussion, and we're going to have the public hearing and come back to it." And I thought that you remember that.
Right, I do.
Some boards did that.
I do. And I just want to make a comment, and then, those folks from Bally Mead came here tonight not knowing how long the rest of those things were going to take before them. I mean, there was no reason for those folks to show up here at 7:00.
To come at 7:00, exactly.
I mean, we knew that the wastewater and the water filtration were going to take at least a half an hour apiece. So, we need to do a better job at giving estimates for folks in writing, because this is the only document people look at, and it says 7:00 P.M. Who'd you say? It's unfair to those, it really was not fair to those folks that sit here all night like that.
I had another question. You talked about building a record to support an appeal, and one of the questions was raised was whether or not we need to defend an approval. So, let's say we approve a dock. Do we need to have anything to defend the approval?
Yes, you do. First of all, if you do a denial, you clearly have to defend the denial because you will be sued by the party who applied for the permit to build the dock. If you grant a dock, the applicant's not going to sue you, but in a but or may. And in those circumstances, we don't defend the board because you granted an approval. We take the owner of the property who received the benefit of your license and say, "Okay, you defend the board." But we have to present them with a record to base that defense upon. So, yes, you still have to have a record even in an approval.
And the major factor would be the Conservation Commission's order conditions and...
So, we do that frequently. Where you have a board, Conservation Commission or the Board of Appeals or the Planning Board, if they grant someone approval, we turn it around on the landowner who applied for the special permit of the variance or the site plan review and say, "Okay, the board granted you what you wanted. Now, you bear the cost of defending their decision." But we still obligated to give them a record to base the defense on.
Frank, based on wetland hearings, wouldn't it not be easier for everyone all around if the selectmen heard it first? Because we hear it based on the public good, and the conservation just hears them based on their wetlands regulations.
Well, that's a decision.
And the two don't go together. And what they approve shouldn't necessarily influence us in a way, because we look at it from a different perspective.
That's a policy decision where you can make some decisions or possibly change how you do it if you want. But one of the things is that, under the zoning bylaw, the Board of Selectmen looks at the overall impact of the project on the town and the aquatic resources of the town, whereas the Conservation Commission looks at the specific location and the impact on the specific location. So, if you reverse the order of the hearing, you might get a different outcome. But again, it's been going on this way for years. If you want to keep it, I don't think it's a harm. But if you want to change it, it might, it's for your consideration. Yeah.
And specifically on that, other communities on dock permits and what have you, their board doesn't vote on them. It's just their Conservation Commission that does.
Well, you have a provision in the zoning bylaw that gives you a special permit granting authority on certain waterfront properties. It's there, and you have it. So, in Falmouth, we have had this two-pronged approach to those particular types of building projects, and they do require both. Which one goes first, of course, is important because it kind of influences the outcome of the second one. And in many cases, you're satisfied with the decision made by the Board of, made by the Conservation Commission with respect to the permit that you give. And if it were to be reversed and you would go first, I don't know what impact that would have on the Conservation Commission. I really don't.
I can tell you what impact it would have, because I was on the Conservation Commission when there was no clear process. And what was eventually agreed upon was where we are now, because we would have applicants who would come before the Board of Selectmen and ask for the board to give its approval before the Conservation Commission had given its approval. And then, you'd have people who would hear from the Conservation Commission before they heard from the Board of Selectmen. And that inconsistency was actually creating problems with court cases where if the board, if the commission, for example, decided to deny a dock when the board had approved it, we ran into situations where it was becoming difficult to defend these cases because it was an inconsistent process. And that's one of, that was, that leads me to my next question, is, I've heard the term "flexibility," and we don't, obviously, we don't want to be pigeonholed because we miss a step in the process. But my understanding is that we have to have a consistent process and follow it lest we be sued for a procedural issue, because there is that possibility, right? That we, let's say, we have a process, whether it's considered rigid or flexible, if we fail, for example, to hear from opponents of a project, and yet, on another project, we hear from opponents on a project, then isn't there a procedural issue that we could be sued for?
Yes, using the specific example that you just made, I would have a problem with that. One of the things you have to do when you have a hearing is, there's got to be fundamental fairness, which means you hear from the interested parties as well as any of butters or anybody else. And to have a policy to say, "Well, today, we're not going to hear from opponents," you'd be in trouble if you did that.
No, but if you have a list of what the requirements are, saying, "These things have to happen."
Yeah.
It doesn't have to be, "Oh, the first thing you do is do this, the next thing you do that, the next thing you do that."
You don't have to necessarily do them in sequential order, but at some point, you have to meet the fundamentals of fairness.
Right.
And that is to listen to all the people who are there. So, yes, I agree.
Does that apply, though, if, for example, we mix things up from one meeting to the next?
No, I don't think so. As long as you cover all the bases, you should be generally all right. I mean, the rigid order is not so much important as that you hit all the fundamentals.
Any other questions? So, we'll be in touch about getting...
And I will start by meeting with Mr. Suso and Ms. Harper and get some ideas from them, and then I'll probably submit to you a proposed procedure on either wetlands or alcohol first, because those are the ones you hear most frequently.
I do have one last question. We did get a document that was submitted to us, and you don't, it's a rather lengthy document, so I'm not expecting any opinion from you this evening on it. But this was submitted to us, and it's the city solicitors and town council...
Yeah, I saw it. I have a copy of it. Yeah. It's a very valuable document. I would, to be frankly, frank with you, when I give you my proposed procedure, I will have copied some stuff from it.
Okay. That's good to know. Thank you. Which actually, and that's a wonderful segue, because the next item on our agenda is planning for the July Committee Chairman's Workshop. And this is something we've talked about, and we wanted to get it on the agenda before July in order to give us plenty of ample time to plan for it. And I think some of what you're talking about, Mr. Duffy, in terms of putting these procedures together, is going to apply for that as well, because we have a number of regulatory boards, obviously, with Conservation Commission and the ZBA, I think, have very mature processes at this point. But perhaps they could benefit from some additional advice or insight. But of course, also, there's the Historic Districts Commission, which I believe they have a quasi-judicial authority as well.
They do, and they got sued for the first time in 20 years or 30 years the other day.
Oh, wow. So, so far, so good, but perhaps they could use a little bit of advice and guidance as well?
Yeah, and it's, I think that it's not, it's important to speak to the boards, and I'd be willing to go to these individual boards and talk to them. But it's also very important to speak to their staffs, because the staff has a great deal of influence over how hearings are put together and the outcome.
Okay. That's good to know. I think it'd be useful, obviously, you've held some workshops before with respect to open-meeting law.
Yes, I do. Open-meeting law, conflict of interest in public records, I do it every year and right after Labor Day in September. after Labor Day in September and October. And, you know, if it's your request that I expand that to one for boards and committees about hearings, I'd be happy to do that, too.
And I think we would like to see that, and perhaps also, as we said in July, the idea being that all of these terms begin on July 1st, and that sometime later in the month of July, perhaps no later than early August, have a workshop, is what the board has discussed on numerous occasions over this past year, to bring everybody together and perhaps discuss all of these issues at one time. So new committee members, new committee chairs will have all of this information available to themselves as soon as they start, as opposed to later in their tenure.
I have traditionally waited till after Labor Day. It's been my impression that you don't get too many people anxious to go to meetings in July and August, but, I mean, whenever you said it, I will show.
Thank you. Do you have any questions or comments about the planning for the workshop? Is there anything that we want to see?
I think July is not an appropriate time, because it really is a busy time for everyone, and I don't think it should be, it should be somewhere end of August, first of September. July is just not the best of all dates. And we have, I've gone to a lot of summer workshops, and we always wait until everyone finishes their summertime. And I think, to be very honest about it, that I think we should wait until the new people are on the board and let them have their decisions about what they think or how this should work, because they would be the five that would be doing it.
Well, I can certainly tell you that the agenda for, let me take a look at this, for June 2nd will be established before the election, simply because there's going to be no time, I have to understand that on our last meeting is May 19th. On May 20th, there will be a new board, but there will be no selectmen's meeting until June 2nd. And so in order to facilitate the continued functioning of the board, the agenda for June 2nd will already be established before the election, or before the, yeah, actually before the election, because at that point, your chair will be gone, your vice chair will be taking the gavel on June 2nd. But we don't want to build an agenda that night, obviously, so it's going to have to be assembled beforehand, and one of the things we can do is place some of these items on that agenda, such as the July workshop, so that the board can sort of hit the ground running and start to address some of these things right out of the gate. And that would, obviously, committee interviews will be included as well on that agenda. Those are already being scheduled and processed at this point. Which brings us to the policy and calendar review. Thank you, Mr. Duffy. I think we don't need to keep you any longer. Unless there's any more discussion about the, specifically regarding the workshop, we can move on to the policy and calendar.
I don't think you have much of me left.
To be quite frank.
That's a good way to put it.
I had to go to Boston.
Well, we can, we'll skip, we'll skip over that then. We can table that and bring that back in a couple of weeks and go over what needs to be addressed at that time. It is in the packet, obviously, the calendar. We want to try to make sure that's as complete as possible, so again, on June 2nd, everybody can hit the ground running and know what to expect, and anything that you think needs to be changed or modified, anything that you think that the new board is going to want to address and start working on, let me know, and we'll make sure that that gets on that June 2nd agenda, so everybody's hitting the ground running. Next item on the agenda, we have the seasonal license renewals, and we have one.
The other one has a list of that, so.
So this is a secondhand dealer, Cape Cod gold and silver coin, 424 Main Street.
Move approval.
Second. We have a motion to approve and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Unanimous. All right. And I'll ask for signatures. And that brings us to the individual selectmen's reports. Does anyone, anything that anyone wants to share at this point?
Rather than reveal what I'll think.
I can't remember what it was.
All right. Did we get, we got the signature pages back, then at this point, motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Founder Abraham Penn taught a valuable lesson that has been part of a tradition since 1919, when he said, "I'd rather make a friend than make a sale." For more than 90 years, Puritan has been making friends as a unique family-owned company right here in Cape Cod. At Puritan Cape Cod on 199 Main Street, as well as Chatham, Mashpee, and Hyannis, you'll find the latest in men's and women's clothing, as well as ski and tennis equipment, and much more. Puritan Cape Cod, 548-0116, or puritancapecod.com.
Internet services provided by Cape.com Incorporated. Established in 1994, Cape.com is the only locally owned and operated internet service provider on Cape Cod. Our specialties include e-commerce applications and design, wide area networking services, and high-speed DSL internet access throughout eastern Massachusetts. Cape.com continues to lead the way with cutting-edge applications, superior networking services, and quality customer support. For more information, visit us at www.cape.com, or call us at 539-9500.